Whenever you want to start, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started then. I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hilsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Gail Cho, Acting Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting in early March. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then members of the public will be able to speak. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you which to speak, click the raised hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentation. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a survey will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor or in opposition or with concern regarding tonight's petitions. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC01-21 Jared Geller.
So this site is located in South St. Louis County, near the intersection of I-255 and LeMay Ferry Road. It is an out parcel of the South County Mall site. Looking at the land use map here, you can see the South County Mall and the various commercial uses that surround the area. There's an aerial photo of the site. You can see there is a structure on the site as well as an advertising sign. You can also see a sort of ed structure in the aerial that is no longer there. So I'm going to show some photos of the site. You can see the aerial is in the bottom left and the arrow will show which way I was facing when I took the picture. So this is sort of the front of the site where the sign is located, identifying the use. Looking to the east, you can see the National Tire Battery Store. Looking northeast into the mall. Southwest at the site. Northwest, you can see the base, some of the base of the advertising sign and South County Mall in the background. This is where the shed I mentioned in the aerial had been. It is no longer there, or a shed or garage. Looking to the north, this is more of the front of the site entrance. Looking south, I-255 is sort of below the grade here. Looking towards the northeast. East into the site. Southeast, there is some existing landscaping on the site. Looking west, towards some of the other out parcels of the mall site. And then we will have the petitioner. Brittany or Jared, which of you has the presentation?
Can you hear me?
Brittany? Do you have the site plan?
I do.
Okay, I'm going to make you the presenter so you can share your screen.
Okay. It's in my PowerPoint. Is that okay?
Yes, so if you click Share at the bottom and then click PowerPoint.
This, what I did was basically making what we are, we're a general contracting company, so we subcontract a lot of our work. We're in charge of hiring the guys, being accountable for the jobs getting done, material getting there. This is the current location. I wanted to show that because what we're trying to do is just put it in an office in that building. We do a lot of paperwork inside of it. We've been renting this space over on the hill for, I think, 10 years. As you can see, we're outgrowing it with multiple desks in there. There's not a lot of room. Little kitchenette. What we do do is roofing, flat roofs, siding, window replacement, gutters, gutter guards and storm roof here. We are, I believe we have 12 employees total. That's what we work with, so not that big of a company. I know the main issues like storing materials, but the type of materials we want to store are advertising. We have pamphlet samples for consumers, like when we go to their homes in order for them to make choices on colors of shingles, things like that. Other material right now, we have stored outside because we don't have a lot of room. We would not be doing that at this building. We'd be storing this type of material, extra material. We'd be storing in the basement of 500 South County. The material we keep is actually just extra pieces of felt, plywood, shingles, some siding in the event that takes hail damage or wind damage and they need something replaced right away. Instead of waiting, sometimes it takes six weeks to get a build, so that way we can do it fast so they don't get leaks. This is the site plan right now, the existing building. We will not be changing anything to the building as far as structure-wise. We do want to utilize the parking in front of our everyday vehicles that we would take home. We do have trailers and a gutter truck, which I do have pictures of that we would like to keep in front of the building for the most part when the job is, like at the end of the day, so guys aren't bringing them home. But structure-wise, like we're not changing anything. We just want to make it aesthetically pleasing. And I put pictures of this just to show what we want to do. We've had a couple of break-ins since we bought the building. So we obviously want to fix that, re-site it. There's already a new roof on it. Fix the landscaping just to make it look nice. We want to redo the barn. These is just the area around it that we want to clean up and fix. These would be the parked vehicles, I think. Some people, we don't have big equipment. We do have trailers that guys work in. They'll bring those on the job site, source tools, some materials for them to go back and forth for a handyman. We also have a trailer that takes the garbage from the homeowner's house, you know, so they don't have to deal with that. And then a gutter truck that somebody does drive every day, but they do not take home. It has machines that are in it, so we can make gutters on-site. This is the inside so far of what we did do to the office. We want to be able to put our desk that you've seen earlier in there. Like I said, we're working with 12 people. I think we have four desks that fit in our office now. So this way it would allow us more room, maybe a little sitting area, conference table. Most homeowners never come to our office. That's very rare. They might drop off of a payment, but we don't sell material. We go to their homes. That's what we do. But it would be nice to have a nicer office for our material to fit in, for all of our people to come to, and we're not stepping on each other. And that's pretty much it. That's the only thing we're trying to do is what the pound market was, except we're not selling material. We just want to store some material in the basement, the same way you would if you lived in a house. Have our desks in there. That way, when we're working with insurance companies, mortgage companies, all that stuff, we can just work in their space.
Okay, questions? Anyone? No one?
Wayne, I have a question. So you won't have, this won't be any type of storefront where possibly if a customer wants to come and look at the shingles, that they can come and look at samples of shingles in a color selection room?
If they wanted to, they could come in. You see how we store stuff. We haven't done that prior because we worked in a small office, but we have homeowners that do stop in because they might not even be sure of what we do, but if they wanted to look at samples, I mean, that stuff we always keep on us and we'd be more than willing to have people in. But we are in a store. You know what I mean? But there are homeowners that want to see an office of a contractor to make sure that they exist and that they're there and they're more than welcome to walk into the place. They just, how it is in our office, we have homeowners, some will walk in. Most of the time, we go to the home, like we take these off of people. We bring everything to them, but it does happen.
Okay, and then, so then you have, you're going to have what, two gutter trucks sitting out in the parking lot?
We own one gutter truck, which was in the picture. Yeah, that's the only gutter truck we have, which we just, we just acquired actually. Is this bottom one right here? That's a gutter truck and it actually, you open up, it's almost like a machine in it that makes gutters. So when we're on-site, people are getting their gutters made right then and there.
You bet.
And that's what that is. That doesn't go home with anyone. That does leave every day because we do have, you know, two of our guys that make the gutters. But as far as at night, we'd like to park it in front of, in one of those parking spots.
So is this property going to be fenced in and locked at night?
No, this would not. This would just butt off to where the office is. I mean, you can clearly see the fence that is along there. Somebody has cut, and since we've been there, it's cut even more. I mean, we'd like to refix that fence, that's for sure. But as of right now, we do have cameras that are out front that actually go around the whole building. I believe we have six to seven cameras. And that's right on my phone to see. But we wouldn't be building a fence outside of what is there.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one. Mel, you want to see if anyone wants to comment?
Sure, so if you speak regarding this petition, you need to go to the attendee list and click the hand to the right of your name. I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Okay, then we do not need rebuttal, so we'll go on to the next petition.
Thank you very much.
Which is PC02-21 Savoy Investments LLC.
Just get the PowerPoint back up. No, you're on.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. I have pictures for you this evening of PC02-21 Savoy Properties LLC. From this picture on the screen, you can see on the red dot, it's located in South County, really just pretty close to the petition that we just saw. This is at the corner of Lindberg and LeMay Ferry Road. And just off of this picture here on the right side of the screen is, would be where South County Center Mall is located. And our petition site is here squared off in red. So this is a land use map. You can see highlighted in yellow is the site. It is a request to rezone the parcel from C-8 planned commercial, what it is now, to C-3 shopping district. You can see it's a very largely retail-oriented sort of area here at this corner. So this is a closer and aerial of the site. The petition site is this, where you see, this is from Google, the Lindberg Tire and Auto Center. That is essentially the site, but the petitioner will ultimately be using more of the site or more of the general vicinity proposed development if it does go through. So here are some pictures of the site. This is looking northeast. This is basically the majority of the site. It's currently occupied by these two canopies. It used to be a filling station, but it's now an auto, an auto station. And you can see there's one structure on the site. Looking east, we're looking here. This is Lindberg. This is looking across the street. You can see it is a, it's quite a, quite a large street, lots of commercial around the area. We're looking northwest and then we're sort of looking northeast here at the other canopy at the site. And with that, hand this over to our petitioner. We'll have that, we'll share with you in just a moment.
Wayne, have the... Okay, you should have the presenter role now.
I actually don't have any slideshow this time. For us, for once, this is fairly simple. But it is the, it is the first step in a QuickTrip and that's why I'm here. I'm Gwen Keane. I'm with QuickTrip. I'm the Real Estate Project Manager. And we are working with Savoy Investments. They are actually going to be the landowners. So they're going to own the entire land. We're going to build and lease from them. And so currently, the owner of that property is John Johnson. They are, Savoy is the owner under contract and they have that property, the property we're talking about tonight, under contract. So we need, the first step in our process is we're going to need to get this rezoned from C-8 to C-3. The rest of the surrounding property is C-3. And then with your approval and the county approval of that rezone, then we will be visiting with you all again with a site plan that will encompass more of that overall property for that process of the approval. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, questions? Anyone?
Yeah, this is Keith Taylor. How many more square feet are you going to have to acquire?
They actually already have it under their ownership. This is the only piece in which they had to acquire and rezone. Everything else is already owned by Savoy.
Okay.
But I think, Keith, if I may interject to Gwen, if you don't mind, I think the intent is that the QuickTrip would replace the St. Vincent de Paul Building, the watering bowl, and then that, that corner piece. That would all be redeveloped. I think that's their intent.
Okay.
If that helps.
So four buildings there?
Correct. Three.
Well, three actually. Some of that parking and then we're going to utilize shared parking with the rest of the overall development with strip centers that are already there, cross-access, all of that will be brought in together to make that overall corner function better.
All right, is the intent here to add a store or you're going to subtract a store at some point?
Well, the intent would be to take down the three and then add a QuickTrip store with a fuel canopy.
I mean, you've got one farther down on LeMay Ferry?
So that one is, will be, we will be replacing that location with this.
With this one, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
That, that is one that we're kind of in this, you know, we're having to figure out where we move forward in the St. Louis area. This is a much better position for us. We believe we will be able to perform better at this location than further down the road where we're at.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Seeing none. Mel, you want to check if even one wants to comment?
Sure, if you would like to make a comment, you'll need to click the Raise Hand button next to your name. Lori Trakis, did you have questions regarding this petition? You were unmuted.
I don't have, whoops, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was trying to chime in on the last petition, but I'm not able to find my name to the participants, so. That came in, we can see it's 7:12 and 7:13. So for this petition, I don't have anything.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. So when you're at the bottom of your screen, there should be a button that says Participants or it should say Participants and your hand, when you hover over your name would be there. But I don't see any other hands, Mr. Hilsinger.
Okay, then that, we don't need rebuttal and that will conclude this petition. Where are we going on the next one? Lori, did you have anything you wanted to say in regards to the first one?
Let me get her back on. You're unmuted.
Yep, thanks, Mel. There's just a couple of questions. You guys can follow up later at your convenience. But a couple of the questions would be, when they talk about the storage of material, how much are they currently storing and where is that at? How many trailers, including the gutter truck, would there be? And as a commercial site, are they, is that an allowable use storing materials? I guess would be the question for the Commission. And lastly, where would those trailers and trucks be stored in the front building or in the rear by where people are going to the mall? So that's what I would have had.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll ask them to address that when they... Or do you want to let them do it now, Mel?
Brittany, would you be able to answer those questions?
I would. Do that now? Do you want to shoot?
Go ahead.
Okay, as far as the gutter truck, the pictures that I took of material being stored is what we have now. You saw back office, I can pull it back up, the outside stuff. I'm, we normally don't even have a pallet of shingles. We usually will have six bundles of shingles. That would be the size. That would be like somebody having Christmas decorations in their house, as far as those tubs. But when it comes to shingles, nails, anywhere from six to eight boxes, I'm talking a small, like everything that we store could fit in the back of a truck. We don't store a mass amount of material because we, we don't sell material. Our suppliers directly deliver material to jobs. We keep a couple of small scraps. That's what we call them, you know, like for real small scraps on us that would fit in the back of trucks in order for repairs or late at night, we've had, somebody had a tree fall on them and that way we can go fix that stuff. It takes us the smallest amount. Right now, the pictures I showed is all the material that we carry and that's probably the most. Our biggest, our biggest stuff that takes up, I'd say the most amount of space, is our samples. The samples of shingles, our mailers, our door hangers, our sign. Again, it would be like, is it, if you had a garage or a basement and you store something on the side. And when it comes to the trucks, it would be the back end, the gutter truck. One of those trailers that just, where we don't have anymore, but we do have two of them, those three would be, where are we looking? Not here, right in front of the building. There would be at least three to four, and I think there's six parking spots, but that's where they would go in the evening when the guys don't take them home. Most of them won't take them home. They'd go right in front of the, where the blue rail is.
And where's your offices now?
Right now, it's on the hill. It's in the hill neighborhood. It's at 5400 Magnolia Avenue. We rent. It's a, there's like an apartment upstairs. There's an office within an adjoining office that we use for our storage of our materials and I can bring that back up if that helps. If that's how it stands right now, there's nothing that's been cleaned out, but we've been there about 10 years, so we've been renting for 10 years.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead, go on to PC03-21 Dan Wagner.
All right, Commissioners, I've got some photos for this, which is PC03-21 Dan Wagner. It's going to be a request for a change in zoning from C-2 to C-8 planned commercial for a 4.7 acre site on the north side of Gravoy Road, 780 feet east of Denny Lane, excuse me. Thank you. So you can see here circled in red, it's a fairly large site. It's a, it's a sort of oddly shaped site with a, with a significant number of buildings currently on the site. The general vicinity, it to the north has got single family, but cutting on to Gravoy Road is a sort of a mix of multifamily, some commercial uses as well as some institutional uses such as the recently constructed Lindberg Schools Headquarters, as well as a future home for St. Louis County's Police Precinct. So this is a land use map, just sort of showing that visually. And here is a, an aerial closer in, sort of showing the general vicinity of the site. So for this petition, we did get out the drone and take a few photos to start off with. So we're looking sort of northeast above the main structure there at the site that you would recognize from Gravoy Road, the sort of brick-fronted commercial structure. We're looking northwest here. You can see some multifamily sort of off in the background. And here in the foreground, you can see these are structures here on the site. The home there is, that is, that is on our site as well as the structure circled in red. You can see it circled in red on both the map and on the pictures, so sort of get a general idea of the scale of the site, where different structures are on the site. So we're looking east, down, down in the foreground is the, is the, the structure that most people are probably familiar with, the sort of larger brick-fronted commercial structure along Gravoy Road. And we're looking southeast, that's Gravoy Road. We're looking south across the street. We're looking southwest at some of the adjoining multifamily developments. We're looking west and we're looking north, northeast, excuse me, northwest here. So then these photos were snagged off of Google. My, my pictures didn't turn out so great from that day. But this is one of the structures at the site, looking at it from Gravoy Road. And then this is the, the structure that most people are probably familiar with. And then circled in red is that home, again, just to give you an idea of scale, because that home is, is on the site. And with that, let's get this turned over to the petitioner.
Mr. Mears, do you have the presentation?
Yep.
Okay. You should have the presenter role now.
Okay, my name is Lenny Mears. I'm with Grand Engineering Engineers. We are the civil and survey consultant on this project for Mr. Wagner. I do also have on the line, when we get to it, Ron Powell with Mohegan Hansen Architects. They are the architects that are working on the project. Again, our site, about a 4.7 acre tract off of Gravoy. The existing site, all slopes pretty drastically from the rear from the north, Gravoy Road. We're proposing to put a self-storage facility on here. It's 120,000 square foot. It would be two stories in the front. Really, the bottom story is only about a little over 40,000 square feet. Or 46,000 square feet right at. And then the, the second floor is the full footprint you see, which is about 74,000 square foot. And that would really, at the rear, look like one story in the back. All the loading and all unloading is done interior to the building. There's some in the front for the lower level and then in the rear for the upper level. Access to the site is off the two entries at Gravoy. And then at the building on each side, it's secured and the entire perimeter is secured. And so only people who have facilities or a storage unit in the facility would have access to that. There's a small amount of retail, which is at the parking in the south left corner. That is really just packing materials and leased space within the building. We are looking at the opportunity to do some RV and boat storage. There's nine spaces provided in the northeast corner. The other, other items are, we, we did have a neighborhood meeting with the residents, a Zoom meeting on December 13th, or December 16th of last year. And we did get some feedback from Um, and we did get some feedback from, from the adjacent residents and we, we went back and kind of regraded to save some of the existing trees along the, the common property line. That's the north and then also the northeast. And then, let's scroll down through here. I'll come back to that too. But, um, we added a significant amount of landscaping based on concern from the adjacent residents to our west and the feedback that we received from them. Um, I guess. Hopefully this comes up. These are the elevations, these are the typical elevations of the building and, and what it would look like. Um, so it's a very nice facility. Uh, we have the indoor garage door open, indoor store or indoor loading area. People would be able to access that, unload and then they can, uh, take it to their areas within the, within the building, but also could go to an elevator to the second floor from this side. If they're, you know, on the second floor in this end of the building. Our site lighting, uh, shows no overflow into the adjacent properties. Um, we'll be able to go with that and, um, with that, I'd open it up to any questions.
Okay, questions, anyone?
Miss, Mr. Mears, um, uh, what, what's the, um, operating hours for this facility?
Um, the operating hours.
This is Ron Powell, the architect. The operating hours are intended to be standard operating hours, 9:30 AM to 6:00 PM on Monday through Friday. 9:30 AM to 5 o'clock PM, Saturday and Sunday. Uh, there'll be gate and facility access more than that when people are, when, um, staff members are there. They'd be available from 6:00 AM till 9:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday.
Thank you, Ron. I knew we had had that.
Okay, what, um, what is the total height of the building, the, the highest part of that building?
Ron, you want to take this one as well?
Yeah, I'll see if I can find that dimension. The, on the front part of the building at Gravoy Boulevard will be about 25 feet approximately. And on the backside, it is, um, when you're closer to the one story for the housing is closer to more like 13 feet.
Okay, and, and the last question that I have is the, um, the, uh, loading and unloading, is that done? Uh, I, I think I heard that it's done outside of the building. Is that correct?
No, it's inside the building. There's a garage access on the rear at the north for the second floor. And people who have storage in the rear and then it's in the front, there's a loading interior of the building.
So there's no outside loading at all to the storage units?
Right. People fall inside, unload, and then there's elevators that they can go to the second floor if they're, it was in the front of the second floor, or they can go to the units in the front.
Okay, what kind of lighting or signage are you going to have?
Uh, the signage is on the building. And then the lighting is.
The last page, show the signage.
Ron, can you identify yourself just for the, uh, public record here?
Of course. My name is Ron Powell. I'm a project manager for Mohegan Hansen Architects Interiors.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So the lighting is a mixture of, there's some wall packs for basically the drivelines and then also, uh, there's some onsite parking or adjacent to the pavement. Parking in front, but then also, uh, in rear for security. Um, and it will all be shielded, so there's no overflow to the adjacent property.
Okay, what kind of material are you using? You probably stated it on this, but.
Generally, the main material of the building is insulated metal panel, like two and a half inches of insulated metal panel. Um, this will be done in a couple of different colors and then there will be some brick accent, uh, kind of banding, um, around the bottom of the base. And then also some horizontal, uh, face brick. This is to, um, go with the area of, uh, the neighborhood that has a lot of brick in it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, well, yeah, just, this is Keith Taylor, a couple of questions. Um, where are some of your other sites in the, uh, St. Louis area? I'm assuming you have some that are already constructed.
The owner does not have any other sites on that in the St. Louis area.
No other sites? About something that's fairly close? Are there any other sites fairly close or where could I look online to look at, at the product?
Are you talking about the owner? So are you talking about just self-storage sites?
No, the, the ones that he's building here around the country.
Isn't this, Lenny, isn't this his first endeavor into self-storage?
Uh, I believe it is actually for, for him personally.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Okay, anyone else? So you know when, um, now you want to check, see who would like to speak?
Yes, so if you'd like to speak now, aim to, uh, click the raise hand icon next to your name. We will start with Samyel LaRose. You are unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak involved in the rezoning of the Gravoy Corridor. I am opposed to the rezoning because I feel that although what is currently there and has not maintained, this is no more desirable. Although Gravoy is a relatively busy road with neighborhood commuter traffic, it is not an area for something human and in an industrial park. The idea of, I've also seen that there's supposed to be storage of boats and RV vehicles here at the property. I have viewed the online proposal along with the landscape. It still will not be what a neighborhood would want in their neighborhood. The size and structures are quite large. I would like to emphasize this is the neighborhood situation and not an industrial. There are many single-family homes in this area. The structures that would fit most in this area would be small businesses similar to the doctor's offices that are right in the area and that are very well maintained. I appreciate your consideration, uh, and that moving forward with this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comments. No?
And once you've made your comment, if you could, the raise hand icon again to, uh, lower it. Let's see. I don't see any other. That's, I don't see any others at this time.
Okay, the petitioner, do you have anything to come, any rebuttal?
I would say that, well, some people, I think that self-storage should be industrial areas and I would disagree with that. A lot of self-storage areas that we are putting in, uh, we've done about 50 of them around the country. A lot of them are in commercial and retail areas. The reason being is that they are more, um, user-friendly than, than industrial areas. Um, over 50% of people who go into self-storage are the femur, female gender. And they feel quite honestly more secure and feel more friendly being in a retail area versus an industrial area where they might feel more, uh, threatened from a security standpoint.
We do have another, one other comment. Uh, Mary Elizabeth Brown, you are unmuted. Mary Elizabeth Brown? I cannot, oh, she has no microphone. Um, if you want to type your comment into the chat, I can share it with the commission. Uh, I do not see any others.
Okay.
Um, uh, Mary Elizabeth Brown, her comment says that it, this is not an industrial development.
Okay. Um, and we have no one else?
That's correct.
Okay, that concludes this petition then. And we'll go to the last item, which is PC 04-21 and 05-21 McBride Barra Land Company.
Okay, so this is a request for a change in zoning from NU to R2 Residence District as well as a request for a planned environment unit procedure for a fairly large site, 26.2 acres. Fairly south, very far south county, near the end of Telegraph. Um, you can see the count here, the red dot in the Oakville area. And on the aerial, you can see the, uh, river along the western, um, part of the site, the site outlined in red. Looking at the land use map, you can see that the east side of Telegraph is fairly, um, developed with single-family residences, including the site, there are still a few large lot, single-family, um, residences, as well as some vacant parcels in the roadway on the west side of the map. Um, west of Telegraph Road, as well as the White Flag Church and Rogers Elementary School. So looking at the site, you can see there are some, um, creeks, some, uh, some watershed lines due to this area being so close to the river. Um, the red lines that just appeared represent the overhead, um, telephone wires, electrical wires that traverse the site. This is the contours of the site. Uh, on the left side, you can see the labels. At the northern property line, Telegraph Road sits at about 428 feet. And at the intersection with Fine Road is about 434 feet. The site raises up, um, a, a very large amount, um, about 100 feet in total. You can see there are sort of these three, um, plateaus sort of on the property. Um, it slopes up and then back down to the south. Looking at the site, this is the existing, uh, entrance off of Telegraph that's not really utilized. Uh, you can see, let me go back to the aerial. You can see there is sort of an access drive that goes to, towards what was the residence, um, in the center of the site. This is looking at Telegraph Road, uh, to the north, you can see the existing White Flag Church. To the south. This is the intersection of Fine Road and Telegraph. Um, so the site and the wires, you can see the wires here, the site is sort of to the left of the image. Um, the red circle that appeared is Rogers Elementary School. This is looking east towards the middle of the site. This is the, is where the residents had been. It's not, we're not quite sure if it's there or not. There had been, um, sort of a scattering of small buildings. See the area circled here on the aerial is this sort of clearing circled on the, um, the image. Looking east again, you can start to see some of the single-family subdivisions that are developed surrounding the site. Another image that shows that, uh, to the northeast. So this subdivision you see does abut the property to the north. Looking south, southeast, you can see Fine Road again. Um, Rogers Elementary School is the white roofed building. And then on the right side of Fine Road is the MS facility on, off of Fine. So there, to demonstrate the elevation again, you can see that Fine Road sits at about 450 feet in this area. And the pine tree is about 494 feet to show some of the elevation change there. Again, Telegraph Road at about 436 feet and the wires, the, um, transmission lines at about 484. So then we will have the petitioner, um, Catherine, do you have the presentation?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Taking you the presenter.
Great, thank you. Okay. Can you all see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Um, good evening commissioners. My name is Catherine Moore and I'm here on behalf of, uh, McBride Homes. Uh, we're happy to be back in St. Louis County tonight with this exciting new project. Uh, this would be a joint venture between McBride Homes and Barra Construction. As industry leaders in the region, we usually do quite a few projects together. And recently we did form a joint development company called Elite Development Services, who would be the developer of this project. So for those of you who aren't familiar with our company, McBride Homes is the largest home builder in the state of Missouri and we're the largest union home builder in the nation. We have been creating neighborhoods in the area for over 75 years, so stability is certainly our strength. And we're currently building 31 communities in the greater area. So we have a substantial amount of experience in St. Louis County and in the metro area. So, um, you already saw some aerials put before you by Mel, but here's another aerial photograph of the site we're dealing with tonight. And it is 26.23 acres in size. And, um, as was mentioned, it's adjacent to Fine Road and Telegraph Road in South St. Louis County. We currently have this property under contract. And in addition to myself, there are other team members here on this call tonight. So hopefully one of us will be able to answer any questions you may have. Uh, our land development team and our project engineers are standing by to address any questions. So, to tell you a little bit about the site, we already discussed the location and size. And as Mel mentioned, it's an underutilized, uh, pretty much vacant site that's currently zoned NU. But it is surrounded by existing residential development and by Telegraph Road. And the applications before you tonight are to rezone this property from NU to R2 with a P designation. So, uh, that is what we plan to discuss with you tonight. So here is another visual of the zoning in the area. And again, there is our three residential developments adjacent to this property. There's our two nearby, our one other NU vacant site. So a residential project would fit in with the area here. And now to show you a color site plan of what we're proposing. Our project before you tonight, we're calling Shadow Point. And when you look at this color site plan before you, you can really see the vast amount of common ground and tree preservation. We have planned to be a focal point and major aspect of this project. Um, so by having all this green space, common ground and tree preservation, it will also serve largely as natural buffers to the adjacent properties in the area. So this slide really gives you a good visual about how the homes will be interior to the site. And as Mel had mentioned, there are significant topography, uh, features that are going on with this property. Creeks, there's the infrastructure, the elevation, the, the vast amount of trees. So we're really working with it to plan the best project for this particular property. So Shadow Point will feature 53 single-family detached residential lots. Uh, it will, it is our plan to build here our Oakwood Home Product Series, which is an extremely popular upscale product series that McBride Homes has. We're planning for access to this project to be off the new streets from Telegraph, so not from Fine Road. Um, again, new streets and sidewalks, um, the large amount of common ground and 32% tree preservation are features of the Shadow Point project. And, um, again, and that common ground will of course be maintained fully by a newly formed homeowners association for this site and common ground amounts to 13.76 acres. To tell you a little more about the homes we're proposing to build here, again, our Oakwood series is an upscale, very popular, single-family home series where we offer ranch, one and a half story and two-story home models. All of the homes will come with two-car garages standard with landscape packages and fully sotted yards. We have variant elevations that our home buyers can choose from, but many of those include stone and brick accents. Uh, so the homes here will be very consistent and complimentary with the other single-family development in this area. Um, and it'll also allow us to bring some new modern housing options with modern floor plans and features to South St. Louis County, which is in extreme demand in that area. So here are some photographs of our Oakwood homes, some of the one and a half. So here are some photographs of our Oakwood homes, some of the one and a half story. You'll see a two-story and a ranch. And here are three more just photographed to give you a feel of what McBride's Oakwood homes look like. Again, before you tonight is our rezoning request, to rezone this site from NU to R2 with a PE. And this is merited here because of the efficient site planning and good urban planning design that's gone into this project to really work with the natural features of the site, to incorporate that common ground, tree preservation, to buffer the neighboring properties. All of that you can't do in a standard zoning district, but you can when you've got the PE designation. So McBride Homes is extremely excited about this opportunity, and we think Shadow Point would fit in quite well in this area and on this piece of property in particular. We think it will be a wildly successful project, and we appreciate this commission's consideration on a positive recommendation to the council about the rezoning request and the preliminary development plan before you for Shadow Point. So that is all I've got. And now myself and our team are available to answer any questions you may have about this project.
Okay, thank you. Questions, anyone? I have a quick question. Is this ground totally vacant now? No structures?
I think there may be lingering residential structure on this site, but Jeremy Roth of McBride might be able to better address what's still existing there today.
I kind of remember seeing this a few years back, and I think there was a structure in question that was on this site.
Jeremy, are you able to answer that, or Chris?
Yeah, I can jump in. Good evening, Mr. Hilsinger, members of the commission, Jeremy Roth with Elite Development. I believe the structure in question was the old farmhouse on the property. It is no longer there. It's been torn down. I think there's still a couple outbuildings that are there, barn, but the house in question is no longer there.
Gone. Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Wayne, my question is, when and if this project is approved and you start moving dirt, how long would it take to start the completion, probably on this project, if home sales continue like they do?
Well, typically, I mean, it takes quite some time to get through the rezoning process in St. Louis County with quite a few council meetings after a couple before this commission. So I would think the goal would be to do site development and start moving dirt this year, but I wouldn't anticipate that home sales would be near completion for some time. Jeremy, would you have any more specific estimate for the commission?
Yeah, if everything went smoothly, I think we'd start development towards the end of this year. It'd be about a four to six month development, and then probably about 18 months of selling and constructing houses.
Thank you.
I just wanted, excuse me, Wayne, I just wanted to remind the planning commission that you have seen this before, several years back when a single-family home developer wanted to build homes. And there was a whole series of relatively very steep, tall retaining walls, 18 to 24 feet in height. Catherine, could you address your grading and your need or not need for retaining walls and the steepness of the streets, please?
I would not be the best one to discuss grading-related issues. Jeremy, would you or Mike Faulkner want to take on that question?
Sure, I can take that one. Gail, yeah, right now, we're not planning any retaining walls on the site. We're trying to use the topography as best we can. You know, there would be a potential to add more lots and more homes to the property with constructing retaining walls. It is a steep site. There would be a lot of grading done. Streets would be relatively steep in some portions, but we're trying to use the topography as best we can and follow the existing contours.
I have a question. Did you mention the lot size of these homes?
The lot sizes here vary. I have a I have a plan here if I can get out of my PowerPoint. The lot sizes here are all 60 feet in width. But it looks like they vary in size. I'm looking on the plan. I don't see a note about minimum size. But when I'm looking at the plan, I see quite a few in the eights and the tens, and the nines, a few in the sevens. But being 60 foot in width, I'd say most of the it looks like the averages appear to be in the eights.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question about the water retention on that property. We all know that it's, you know, it's a pretty hilly piece of property. And without the benefit of really seeing typically see of a layout, how are they going to handle that?
We have detention and water quality areas in the common ground. And of course, we'll have to comply with MSD requirements and handle all stormwater on site. There's quite a few.
Can you show the site plan again, Catherine, please?
Sure, sure. Let me share my screen. Okay, do you guys see that?
No.
No, not yet.
Okay, what am I doing wrong?
I think you need to click Share from within WebEx again. Yeah, it's coming up now.
Okay, here's the actual plan. And you'll see, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but if you can, right here's a water quality and detention area. Here's a water quality and detention area. Here's a third. So there is significant amount of area here planned for stormwater management in these vast common ground areas. Do you have any more detailed questions about that? I mean, obviously, you can't just waste any water offsite.
There's a creek that runs on the north side of that property. And that's where it looks like you have the water retention on that portion of the property. Is that correct?
I'm looking, okay, my north arrow. I see some that appear. We have water, I mean, there's
Catherine, that's correct. Those two large basins are on the other end. So runoff heading that direction would be directed to those two basins before it was discharged into that creek.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah, because those residences are, as you pointed out before, with the elevations are significantly below where these homes are going to be. And we're taking a lot of water off there and have to take it somewhere before it hits that creek. Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, what's your plan? Do you have to do much blasting on this site? You look at that?
More than likely, there will be a need for blasting on this site. We've done some efficient soils reports, and there is bedrock on the site. And we do have some significant cuts into the hillside as we traverse the topography. So more than likely, there will be the need for blasting on the site.
Yeah, I was on the Melville School Board when Rogers Elementary was built. And we paid a great price to blast it, to put that building in, much more than what was anticipated. Which is why I asked that question.
Yeah, we are planning for, we know it's a very likely scenario, and we've had it accounted for in our costs.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? See, no, we thank you. Mel, you want to say about questions?
Sure, we do have a few hands raised. If you do want to speak, please click the raise hand icon by your name at this time. We will start with Phyllis Hall. Phyllis, you are unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Okay, thank you very much. A lot of my, I'm sorry, a lot of my concerns kind of echo what Mr. Sneed brought up. I live in the Forest Creek subdivision, and I live in Lot 221, if you see that on the map. But I'm really quite concerned about the water. It looks like a great deal of water is going to be channeled from that subdivision down to the creek. And our property line is pretty flat, so there's not going to be a drainage effect of the water that's directed towards our property. It looks like a lot of water is going to go into that larger basin, and from there, it's going to be diverted in some kind of an outflow tract at our property. So I'm concerned about that, and I'm wondering if they've surveyed the current watershed versus the proposed watershed with this subdivision. And the other part of my question has to do, I see that they have to get a land disturbance permit. And it looks like there's going to be a 50 to 60-foot elevation change. And although they say they're not taking out many trees on the area towards our subdivision, it looks as though there are almost half of the area is going to be deforested. And so I'm a little bit concerned about what that permit entails and what precautions do they have to outline to be taken during the construction and after the construction of the homes being built? And how is that monitored for all the erosion that could happen?
Okay, we'll ask them to answer that on rebuttal.
Okay, next will be Michelle. If you can state your last name, you are unmuted. Michelle? We will come back to Michelle. Oh, hold on. Michelle? You might need to connect your microphone. We will go to Barbara Dormuth. Barbara, you're unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful. So we have several questions. I'm sorry, my name is Rob. I'm not Barbara. We're all sitting here together as a family. We would, and thank you, by the way, for taking our questions. We really appreciate it. So we have several questions, once again, about the watershed. That is something that is really, really important to us. We've been through five of the floods that have happened down here, and where the water is backed up on the other side of Telegraph here in the creek. And we're concerned about that watershed. We're also concerned about the watershed from the property and the drainage ponds to the south that would be heading towards Rogers. I guess that would be east at that point. We are wondering, we have a couple ponds that we do not want to be affected by anything that comes down the hill, you know, natural or unnatural, silt, anything else. Then we have questions about
Well, we had all the way up to the 98 flood and everything. Every flood come up, we have to go around.
Yeah, so we've had it where the I guess when it comes down to it, what about the family cemetery that's on the property? We are concerned about that, how that's going to be handled.
Yeah, that's
So did anybody speak to you about the family cemetery?
We will look into that.
And then I guess, you know, the other question is the historical home. Who gave permission for that to be tore down?
Okay, we will ask the petitioner to address that comment.
Yeah, we'd like to know that. I mean, it's just that one day it was there and the next day it was gone without our permission. Okay, and what about blasting? Is blasting allowed in reference to our property?
And they don't, you should hear everyone around them here had blasting, and they had cracks in their basements. I had a guy
So I guess we're worried about foundations and everything else with what's happened previously.
Okay, we can address that on rebuttal.
Okay, we will go to Douglas Morrell. Douglas, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi there, this is Doug Morrell. It's 3242 Forest Lane Court. I assume you can hear me. I live one lot over from what the proposed development is, house number or lot number 36 and 37. It's on the, I guess that'd be the eastern edge of the development, so I'm one house over. I've got several comments that you can address, but first of all, with regard to flooding, just as a point of information, for most of the first six months of 2020, that area at the bottom there with the creek was quite flooded most of that time. It backs up from the Merrimack underneath Telegraph. I understand it's even been higher in past floods. I've only lived there three years, but I think 2020 it was quite high as far as I'm concerned. If you're going to add more runoff, you know, I just wonder if you're putting the retention ponds in the right spot and everything, because that does back up there. There's quite a lot of water. You're going to hit a lot of rock. I'm told that there was a lot of blasting done to get these houses in in the late 90s. So there will be a lot of rock up here. I'm up at the top. I'm right up at the top, near the top of what this property is at. So I've probably got the same stuff under my house that you're going to find in that particular area. Another comment is with regards to density. It looked to me from the plans like you've got a five-foot setback on the sides, which would be 10 feet between the homes, which to me feels quite dense. Kind of compact, not what we have in the rest of the houses here. There's a lot of small lots, as far as I'm concerned. The majority of your lots, especially on the first, say, the bottom half of going up the hill, look to be in the 7,000-foot, square foot range, which is, I think, kind of puny in this area. But I, you know, I'm a pragmatist. I know every square inch of land in South County is going to get developed one way or another. But this area just feels, this particular project feels quite dense and cramped to me. But I think that's about all that I have to say at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be, we'll try Michelle again. Michelle?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Please state your last name for the record.
Okay, my name is Michelle Palmer, and I live at 3019 Crystal Lake Drive. And I've lived in the subdivision since 99. And I'm currently a trustee of our neighborhood. I'm very familiar with the traffic conditions on Telegraph, and my concern is that And my concern is that there might be safety, more safety issues that need to be looked at before adding 53 more homes to our traffic. There is not a, I'm thinking that maybe a continuous turn lane from Becker and Polgate to Fine Road need to be added. There are bits and pieces of a turn lane along this stretch, but it's not uniform. And I worry because the speed limit's 50 miles an hour and the visibility in some of the areas is limited. And there have been many accidents with injuries and worse throughout the years. And then there's an issue with trucks driving extremely fast. So if we're going to be excavating some of that, they're going to be full and they're going to be lying up and down Telegraph. You know, we had those issues when MSD was working on stuff and with the white church or the white flag church. I didn't know if possible studies need to be, you know, done to figure out how to alleviate some of, you know, the safety aspect of it. And I just, if we're going to, you know, allow this to happen, I would just like this to be addressed.
Okay. Let me see. Lori Tracus, did you have comments regarding this petition?
No, I don't. I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, it looks like we've addressed everyone who's raised their hand. If you did not have a chance to speak, please click the raise hand button by your name. But I don't see any we haven't. Oh, wait, hold on. We'll go to Kelly Mesmer. Kelly, you are unmuted.
I, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to answer a question. The house that was demoed there was permitted through St. Louis County. And it was not deemed historic by the property owners that only St. Louis County Historical Site Society had added it to their list, but not with the permission of the property owners. But it has been demoed and was permitted.
Okay, thank you.
We have, looks like another from Steven Wong's. Steven, you are unmuted.
This is actually his wife, Michelle Wong's. I live in the Forest Creek subdivision as well. Can everyone hear me okay? We're just worried about proper property values. What were these houses going to be going for?
Okay, we'll ask them to address that.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that is all the public comment.
Okay, Catherine, can you answer a few questions?
Do you, do you have, you know, groupings of questions you want to ask me? Do you just want me to?
Either one is the pricing of the homes.
Sure. Yes, as far as the pricing of the homes, we have anticipated average sale prices in the upper threes to the upper four. So now that we've got our state-of-the-art design studio located in Chesterfield, all McBride's home buyers get to go to that design studio and really add value to their home. They get to select finishes, working with one of our design staff. And so the price can really vary, but we would anticipate that they would be in the upper threes to upper fours, somewhere in that range, depending on what interior selections people pick.
Okay. Any knowledge on the cemetery? I was not aware of anyone, of one being there.
I have no knowledge about the cemetery. Jeremy is on, and our engineer from Sterling Engineer Company, his link tonight didn't work. So he's listening as a member of the public, but he didn't get access as a participant. Jeremy, are you aware of a cemetery existing on this site?
And we've done some investigation with some of our consultants and surveyors on the property, and that is new knowledge to us. So we'll definitely double check and make sure. And if there is one, obviously, we'll move to address it and either use avoidance. To our knowledge, we don't know of one on the property, so.
Okay. The question on blasting, which is permitted within St. Louis County. Jeremy, you want to address that?
Yeah, blasting is sometimes a necessity with developing property, especially in this part of the county. And there's a process that we go through that's governed by the county and by the state. If we do blasting, we'll do, we always do pre-blast surveys of any structures within a specified distance of the blast point. And that's for the benefit of both and the adjacent property owners. So a third party will go into those houses, go into those structures, do a survey, note any existing cracks in any foundations, any existing cracks in any drywall. And then after the fact, if there is damage done, then it's documented. There's a baseline. That homeowner can reach out to us. We'll work with our contractor to rectify that. It's very rare that there is any damage done. But we take all the necessary steps and precautions, go through the necessary steps of getting it permitted in order to do that blasting.
Any comments on runoff?
And I would just reiterate what Catherine said, that, you know, we'll have to have detailed design plans done with a professional engineer. They get reviewed by the county. They get reviewed by MSD. The latest stormwater criteria set forth by the Department of Resources and EPA is very stringent. All the runoff from the site not only gets treated for runoff and volume, but also for water quality now. So it's filtered through solar media. Pollutants, contaminants are removed before it's discharged into the receiving streams. If there's issues with high water and flooding, that's taken into account by MSD and by our engineers to make sure that any detention that we have is above those high water limits. So it'll be vetted very thoroughly through the governing agencies before we get a permit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
There was a question in the chat about developing in proximity to the power lines.
I mean, we work with all of the utility providers to make sure that our plant, our infrastructure plans and our layouts work with the infrastructure and that we can service this site. If there are any issues concerning those lines, I'm sure Jeremy and our team will work with Amrin on that issue.
Wayne, this is Bill. There was a question about the density between the houses and I think also the land disturbance be forced in the area. If they want to talk about that, maybe it may come a little better.
With regard to density, the gentleman who asked questions about density, he said his, you know, review of our plan. He thought that the lots were on the smaller side, perhaps on average, in the sevens, and that our lots were too close together. So while I looked closer and our engineer, who, like I said, his link for tonight's meeting wasn't quite working, him and I communicated. And our average lot size is actually 8,416 square feet in size, which is a fairly good single-family detached lot. And all of the setbacks, front, side yard and rear yard setback here are comparable with developments all throughout the area of St. Louis County. So this is not going to be a particularly dense or particularly close development. And in fact, when you look at the density calculations on the front page of our plan, if you just look at the acreage, you know, divided by the 15,000 square foot lot size required in our two, you would be permitted over, I think, at 76 lots. So here, we're coming in at 53 lots. So we're clustering the common ground and getting that 32% tree preservation by having these standard-sized lots in the middle. But the density, when you look at the acreage as a whole, less the right of way and less that common ground, it's not, it's not a super-dense development in our opinion or in our experience in St. Louis County. And as far as the land disturbance permit, absolutely, we're held to extremely high parameters and guidelines and have to follow the codes put in place by all of the governmental entities who have jurisdiction over this site. And so to get that permit, to get our grading permits, to get improvements planned approved, we have to jump through quite a few loops and work with various jurisdictions. So we will comply with everything required of us as far as permitting goes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we appreciate your time. Thank you. And this concludes the hearing.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll conclude the public hearing and go on to executive session.